Um, now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. We have Commissioner Akall, Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Glenn Winkle, Commissioner Lawler, and Commissioner Winter. I'll let the record show that Commissioner McCann is excused and absent from the meeting tonight. Next, we will move to commission communications. Is there any communication from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to staff communication.
Good evening and chair nine commissioners, I'm Jana Fox, current planning manager. I have no staff communications for you this evening either.
Great, okay. So moving right along, the first item on the agenda is the application for Ridgewood Park Dog Run case file. Case file numbers CU 2023-0002, DR 2023-0038, and PD 2023-0001. This matter is, was continued from the October 18th, 2022 date. The application, the applicant has the burden of providing that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provisions. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are: Development Code Sections 40.03.1 Facilities Review, 40.15.15.5(c) New Conditional Use, 40.20.15.1(c) Design Review Compliance Letter, and 40.55.15.1(c) Parking Requirement Determination. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards these approval criteria and other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes to apply to the application. Failure, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Landes Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal this decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission, the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law requires commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or site visit to declare? I'll start with Commissioner Akall.
None, two, all, three.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis.
Uh, no to all three.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
No to all three.
Commissioner Lawler?
Go to all three, although I am familiar with the site because I walk by there regularly.
Okay, Commissioner Winter?
I took a site visit last week, but I had no contact.
Okay, and none to all three for me as well. Um, does any member of the audience wish to question the commissioner about an ex parte contact or site visit or challenge the right of commissioner to participate in this hearing? Let the record show, there's no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation followed by commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will then be given 20 minutes for its presentation followed by the commission's questions of the applicant. Members of public in support of the application can then speak for up to five minutes each, followed by members of the public opposed to the application may speak up for five minutes each, and then members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak each. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then have your final comments from staff. We can now begin with the city staff report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brittany Gata. I'm an associate planner in the Community Development Department, and this evening I'll be providing staff's presentation on the Ridgewood Park Dog Run project. The applicant is the Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District, and the district proposes to add a new public dog run to an existing public park in a residential zoning district. The proposal itself requires three land use applications. The first is a new conditional use application since a public dog run is a conditional use in the underlying residential zone. The second application is a design review compliance letter which evaluates if the new fencing required to enclose the dog run meets applicable design standards. And third, a parking determination application is required to establish the amount of bicycle parking that is required for the proposed use. The proposed dog run is located in Ridgewood Park, which is an existing 1.27 acre THPRD public park. This is located to the north of southwest Wilshire Street. It's west of southwest 96th Avenue, and it's also on the south side of the Highway 217 and Highway 26 interchange. It's also directly east of the off-ramp associated with the highway. The site is zoned residential mixed A, and it's located in the Central Beaverton Neighborhood Association Committee area in a spot that borders unincorporated areas of Washington County to the east and south. And as you can see on the graphic here, the park is, is next to residential neighborhoods and the zoning is Washington County R5. First, staff evaluated the new conditional use application for the new public dog run, and staff found that it met all applicable approval criteria. One of the approval criteria that I want to specifically talk about this evening is the one that requires that the proposed use is compatible with and will have a minimal impact on the livability of properties in the surrounding area. And when staff evaluated this criterion, we found that the proposal is compatible for three primary reasons. The first is that the site has been a public park since 1951. So the area has already been subject to the impacts that are typical of public parks such as noise or increased user traffic in the area. Second, the dog run is proposed on the far western portion of the site at the furthest distance from abutting residential properties. And lastly, the noise impacts related to the dog run will be mitigated by the significant road noise that's already coming from the highway, and staff expects that the noise impacts from the dog run will be minimal compared to existing conditions. Next, the application, um, the, excuse me, the design review compliance letter application evaluated the addition of fencing to the site, and this will create the actual enclosure and gate for the dog run. The new fencing is shown here in red, and it's proposed to connect to existing fencing which is shown in yellow. And then a new gate would connect the dog run with an existing pathway which is located at the southeastern corner of the new fencing, which connects to an existing pathway on site leading to the primary entrance of the park on Wilshire. And staff's assessment found that the project is consistent with all applicable approval criteria and design standards for this application. The last application is a parking determination. This is required since public parks and public dog runs, excuse me, public dog parks and dog runs are not land uses that are identified in the Development Code's Required Bicycle Parking Ratio Table. So in these cases, when the use isn't listed, a parking determination is needed, and an applicant must submit a study which justifies the amount of bicycle parking they propose to serve the development, and they have the burden of proving that it is an adequate amount of bicycle parking to serve the use. So for this particular project, THPRD is not proposing to provide bicycle parking, and there is no existing bicycle park, bicycle parking on the site. And the applicant submitted parking study analyzed three dog runs within existing public parks that had similar sizes and characteristics to the one proposed. And the study found that the dog run use itself doesn't generate a demand for bicycle parking since all of the observed users accessed the sites by car or on foot. After reviewing the parking study, staff concurs with the findings and the applicant's proposal to provide no bicycle parking to support the dog run use. In summary, staff finds that the proposal has met all applicable approval criteria, and staff recommends approval of the Ridgewood Park Dog Run Project subject to the conditions of approval in the October 11th staff report. That concludes staff presentation. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Do commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Lawler, yes?
I'm, uh, could you kind of explain the, the difference, the different configurations of the property? It seems like the illustration you just showed, it goes a lot farther, it goes, there's an angle to the west, whereas the, um, tax map going north and south, the western boundary of the property. Could you just explain the differential, um, in those two images?
Yes, of course. Let me share my screen of the site plan. Okay. So I, I don't have the tax map handy, but hopefully I can answer your question using the site plan. So the boundary here on the western side, there are two different, um, areas going on here. There is the property boundary itself, and then there's also a portion of the project that's located on ODOT right-of-way, which is within this, um, this area on the southwestern side of the fence. Um, so although the fence extends into, oh, and I think my line work was a little bit off when I made this graphic, I'm sorry, but the, um, you can see the fence juts out into the ODOT right-of-way while this line actually, um, goes along the property line itself. So this is an error here. The fence extends this way. Um, I hope that that answers your question. I know, um, this site, um, hadn't, it had been surveyed for the purpose of this project, but our, our tax maps and our GIS maps aren't always reflective of what a survey will actually show us of property lines.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the staff report, you know, the, the image shown in the staff report, I guess that's where, I don't know, it looks like, it does look like it doesn't square up with the aerial photo, but in fact, they have the authority to use that property that's owed out right away. I did, there was some, some script about that. You see how the, the northwest corner?
Oh, northwest, I'm sorry, okay.
See how that, so they do have the authority to use that property for the dog park up there in the northwest corner.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
So that's just image rectification is kind of off. Okay.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's really what I was wondering about. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Do other commissioners have questions of staff?
I have one question about bike parking. So there's no requirement to bring the current park up to any parking requirements for bike parking?
That's correct, since the park is not a part of this, this proposal.
Okay. Well, it's a shame they don't have at least one bike parking stalls for the neighbors. But maybe they'll do it out of the kindness of their hearts. Okay. Um, if there are no other questions for staff, we can move on to the applicant's presentation. Um, if the applicant could please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your name and address for the record, we would appreciate it.
Hello. I am gonna try and get my screen up here. Something that... Okay. Trying, can you see my screen? It is a full?
Yep, yeah, we can see it.
Of the screen? Oh, wonderful. Okay, great, thank you. Let's see here. Can I get all of my stuff here in a row? All right. And you can hear me, okay? Great. Um, well, hello, planning commissioners and city staff. My name is Nicole Paulson. I'm a park planner for Tuolton Hills Park and Recreation District. Um, the address we are at is 6220 Southwest 112th Avenue, Suite 100, Beaverton, Oregon 97008. Thank you for the time that I get to spend here with you this evening. I'm excited to share about the dog run that THPRD hopes to install at Ridgewood Park. Um, Glenn Sutherland with AKS Engineering and Forestry is here with me as well as Tim Bonin with THPRD and Mimi Dukas. So let's jump right in. We can get this screen working. Do you see a large vicinity map?
Yep.
Great, great.
Yep.
All right, well, this vicinity map really highlights, Brittany did a great job showing and talking about the area that we are in this vicinity map. Also highlights the community where the dog run will be constructed. Um, and as Brittany mentioned, flanked with 26 to the north and 217 to the west, as well as residential to the south and the east. The property was, um, originally a park, um, within the community until THPRD took over ownership in 1965. And so if you haven't been by the site, here's kind of a Google street view of, uh, an image of the site showing existing park amenities. Um, there are large trees on the west, a buffer hedge on the east side, community garden on the north, uh, play equipment. Um, and then the amenity, as Brittany mentioned, that we're proposing is showing, um, also in the red dot uh, location area is the dog run that we're looking at. So through our vision-action plan, um, our park and recreation goals are shaped by the input that we received back in um, 2018, 19 with over, um, 10,000 community members from all across the district providing their input. Um, so these decisions of locations and where we're putting amenities and what we're putting in are always um, aimed at balancing resources we need across the entire district. Um, and dog runs are consistent with what we've heard from the community, and it's a desire, um, that we've um, heard with many of the public engagement, uh, efforts that we've gone through with multiple parks um, in the, throughout, in and throughout the district. So there was some community engagement, uh, different events that were held. Dog runs, unlike dog parks, are smaller in size, and they typically serve a local neighborhood that provides the walkability. THPRD installed a temporary dog run that was supposed to run from November 6th through the 20th of 2020, so that was during the pandemic. We unfortunately were not able to hold the large event that we had hoped for due to pandemic, uh, but it received such a positive response that we did extend that dog, that temporary dog run for an additional 10 more days. Um, and it was really, really well, well-received. And we received a lot of encouragement for the amenity to become permanent. And we believe that having this designated space for dogs will likely avoid or eliminate significantly, or significantly reduce concerns um, of maybe some of the comments that were provided, uh, to the city through the publicing, uh, through the land use process about, um, off-leash dogs or maybe, um, dog excrement. We would be providing dog bags, um, trash receptacles, making sure that we have a nice, safe, enclosed area for dogs to eliminate any off-leash dog, uh, dogs in the area. So at this point, oh, we also held a virtual neighborhood meeting back in May, um, that was also well-received. And we have a lot of folks that have been checking up on this project really eager to get it started and going. So I'm gonna pass it off to Glenn at this time, who will talk a little bit more and go in depth about our actual project.
I think you're on mute there, my friend. Thank you, yeah, I said quite a bit without realizing that. Thank you, good evening, everybody. So this slide shows the location of the dog run and the park itself. Commissioner Lawler, I think you had some, uh, questions about where that actual property line was, and I hope that this, uh, image shows that a little bit more clearly. Uh, everything that's outside of that red line is part of that ODOT Shared Use Agreement. Uh, there's an existing fence that you can see, uh, that, that Brittany, uh, mentioned in her presentation, that's just under that line of existing mature trees and extends all the way back to that sound wall that's along, uh, Highway 26 there. Uh, next slide, please. Great, thank you. Uh, so this is just a copy of the site plan that you received, uh, but I did want to point out that, uh, this shows that the dog run would be located on the westernmost portion of the park. Uh, so located as, as far away from residential uses as is possible on the site. Uh, we would be retaining that large row of mature trees that's, uh, along that existing fence line. That was one of the aims of, uh, locating this dog run where, where it is shown here. And then also, uh, to point out some of the other existing items on the site that, that make this really an appropriate use for, uh, where it's been selected is that existing hedge that's on the eastern side there. You can kind of see that, uh, shown in, in a little bit of a bubble outline along that property line. That is a very thick, uh, mature hedge that is pre-existing, part of the existing park there. Uh, and that separates this site from, from the closest residential neighbors there to the east. Uh, and you can also see pointed out the existing, uh, trash and bag dispensers. So those are already there. People actually make, uh, good use of this site already, even though it hasn't been officially made a fenced dog run. So there's a lot of people who bring their dogs here and, uh, make use of the existing bag, uh, and uh, dispensers and trash receptacles. And there's one at the northern entrance and that main, uh, south entrance there, so those amenities are already in place. There's a water fountain, the existing sidewalk. Uh, so all of these things will lead to, to the proposed fenced area, which is really, uh, three sides of, of the, the fence there. So the, the rest of that is existing. Uh, and I think that's all that I had to go through the site plan.
Thank you, Glenn. So that does conclude our presentation for the applicant. So I would pass it back to you, Chair Nye.
Okay, great, thank you. Do any commissioner, um, commissioners have questions of the applicant? Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, hi, uh, maybe two informational questions. Number one, I saw the comments in the staff report, and then you made the comment about the, the water fountain is already pre-existing, so I was picturing would we have to lay any new piping? Um, other dog parks, you'll see different water facilities with dog, dog height, um, water, uh, water spigots and such. Uh, i- is there any modification to the, to any of that fixtures, or is it just all existing fixtures?
At this time, it is just existing fixtures. There is an opportunity, um, to potentially, we, we have a program within our district where we are looking at upgrading um, different drinking fountains to, uh, sites that would be relevant where we would need to add, um, the, the upgraded drinking fountain that has the pet fixture bowl on the bottom. And so we are actively looking if that's an opportunity that we can include here at this time.
Okay, but, but you don't foresee affecting any plumbing changes at all, right?
Oh, no, I'm, no, no plumbing changes. We would use existing infrastructure.
Okay, and then, um, within the dog run itself, this is a pure ignorance question. Uh, i- is there consideration for, um, uh, ground or, or, or waste seeping into the ground? Uh, assuming a, assuming a busier population of dogs now, that there'd be an official dog run. Um, I'm picturing waste and urine and such. Is that managed any differently than a non-dog park, park?
It is not managed any differently. We will lay chips down in the area, um, in the hopes that that will, um, manage some of that waste. It's not just inundating the ground. Um, but there isn't anything specifically that our maintenance team does any differently than what we've seen uh, at dog runs versus dog parks.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawler?
I was, um, wondering about, uh, any hours of operations. I mean, uh, is this a dawn-to-dusk kind of, uh, facility? And, uh, could somebody, is it gonna have, have a lock eight after hours? Or, or could somebody wander in late at night and have their dog making a bunch of noise? That's what I'm thinking.
That's a really good question, thank you. Um, the site is consistent with our other THPRD sites, um, that are not programmed, which means that it is open dawn to dusk. Um, our dog runs likely do not, they will not have a padlock on them, so, um, in theory, if there is anybody that would choose to use the dog run at a time that is after hours, we would encourage anybody and the neighbors to contact our, um, security services and our, our safety services that would be able to, um, address anybody that might be on site after hours.
You, would you have any, uh, signs that might post that information? Or, I don't know if that's, um, I mean, I don't know if that's intuitively known by people. They might think about calling the police rather than the, uh, park, a park ranger.
Oh, the, uh, uh, Commissioner Lawler, are you referring to information about, um, the hours of operation? Or are you referring to contact information for safety services?
I, the latter, you know, like if, if somebody brings their dogs at 2:00 in the morning and they're barking, would they call THPRD facility people, or is that a police call?
I know that our safety services are, are available pretty late at night. I'm not sure if it's at a 2:00 AM situation, but it is definitely information that we have, our safety services information on our rules signs, on our park rules signs, and their contact information.
Okay, I think that would be very helpful for neighbors if they encounter that situation. Thanks.
Great. Do any other commissioners have questions? Okay. Seeing none, we can move on to the public testimony portion of the agenda. Um, we will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those opposed, followed by those neither in favor or nor opposed. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. Verbal testimony that includes profanity or obscenity may be terminated without additional warning. Now is the time for testimony in favor of the application. For those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using your raised hand feature in the Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair you would like to speak. Do we have anybody wishing to speak this evening? I am seeing none. Okay. Well, staff has stated that we do not have any public testimony. They, um, so with that, there's no need for the applicant rebuttal. Does staff any, any final comments?
No further staff comments. Thank you, Chair Nye.
Okay. Well, with the final comments complete, I will close the public hearing. In a standard procedure, I will randomly poll commissioners to state their conclusion on the application. Um, I will start with Commissioner Winter.
Well, as a lifelong dog owner, I'm always in favor of dog parks. Primarily not so much to protect the dog, but to protect other people who have a, a fear of dogs. So having them behind a fence provides safety, a safety factor to a lot of people that aren't comfortable being around dogs. I think this particular site is an excellent I think this particular site is an excellent site. The hedge that, um, oh, Mr. Sutherland referenced is, uh, is, um, about ten feet thick. So I don't think that there's gonna be, I mean, it's as, as much a sound barrier as anything else. So I think this is a perfect park for a dog run. And I'm complete compliant, and I think it's completely incomplete compliance. Jesus.
Great, uh, thanks, Commissioner Lawler.
Yeah. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, I do, uh, ha- happen by this, uh, park facility over the past years. And people use it informally anyway for that purpose. And so to formalize it and have a fenced area for, for the dogs and to keep it separate from the playground, I think it's, uh, a great idea. And it is a good location, so, and I do believe it meets the criteria for approval.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Glenn Winkle.
I think it's a pretty straightforward proposal, and it does meet the approval criteria. I do agree that it's in a really good location, and people will use it for a dog park whether it's designated that way or not. So having the fencing, um, as Commissioner Winter said, is, is great, not only for the dogs, but for people that don't like dogs. Um, so I think it is a good proposal, and I'm in support.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Ellis?
Uh, yeah, aligned with the other commissioners, um, I, I dig it as a dog owner. Um, it's a little far for me, so I wouldn't use it, but it looks like a great location. And, um, you know, assuming THPRD did their homework on desired uses for the space, uh, it looks like it meets the required conditions.
Great, and Commissioner, a call?
I'm in support of it too. It's pretty straightforward, and it's a nice area.
Great, thanks, and I agree with my fellow commissioners. So, um, is there a motion this evening? Commissioner Lawler, maybe?
Sure, I'd be happy to make a motion. I move that we approve the Ridgewood Park Dog Run comprised of case file CU twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two, DR twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three eight, and PD as there was, there was things found in the October eleventh staff reports and the conditions of approval that are in attachment E of that report.
Do we have a second?
I'll say I'm, I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, a vote by roll call will be taken. When your name is called, please say aye or nay. Uh, Commissioner, a call?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn Winkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawler?
Aye.
Commissioner Winter?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so this, the vote passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized, memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral or written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. Um, we are now adjourned at seven oh four PM.